I guess my gavel is no good when that thing's beeping, probably. Okay, good evening to you all and welcome to this regularly scheduled work session of the Garner Town Council. We appreciate you being here and several of you, maybe all of you that are here will be, will be hearing from me this evening, I'm sure. So we appreciate it. I guess the only general comment I would make is that I'm pretty sure we will finish up things before the looming storms that are moving up the coast will have any impact here. We certainly hope that's the case. So be safe when that happens. Okay, Madam Town Clerk, I'm gonna ask if you do call the roll. I'm present.
Councilmember Matthews. Member Singleton. Ellen.
Here.
Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much and thank you council members for being here this evening. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. Have it before you. What say you? Okay, motion properly made and seconded. If you favor adoption of the agenda, would you vote aye? If there's any opposition, no, and it is so ordered. Okay, I think we can move right into items D. I'm not aware of any presentations. Is that correct, Ms. Gibson? Okay, all right, thank you. So we have three items under discussion and reports this evening, and I'm going to recognize our budget director, David, who will introduce the first presenter this evening. So if you will, sir, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to everyone. Matt Nunkesker back tonight from City Explained to follow up on the cost of services study. It was initially shared with council. Preliminary version of the report, and so it kind of, you know, what the updated report was gonna look like and some of the numbers. That break even point for new development. Since the planning. Been hard at work. Further refining the data, he's been able to. That has made the, the results a little bit different than what you saw in February, but still along those same lines. I want to thank Jeff for his help in that as well. He really was able to get. Okay. Jeff was able to take some of the data and use GIS to get down to a street level to kind of parse out time and resources spent on single family versus multifamily development. So that helped us, again, refine some of the data that you saw in February. So I do want to thank him because that was a time-consuming effort that he really helped us out with. And so I appreciate that very much. So with that, I will turn it over to Matt and he will guide you through a presentation going over the draft of the report.
Very well. Thanks, sir. And welcome back, Mr. Nunkesker. Good to see you again, sir.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, members of council, administration, thank you so much for the invitation to come back again. We're gonna talk about two different items today in separate presentations, but they are gonna co-mingle. And so I may talk to you about how one is informing the other even during both presentations. So just bear with me as I go back and forth. But for the first item we have for today is the cost of services study. And as David had mentioned, we've been hard at work and I will second his praise for staff. They were able to mine a bunch of data for us, create some data for us that made the analysis more precise. It was always accurate in terms of the methodology, but this made it much more precise. And so we're happy to present to you today some of the results as part of the final study. So first and foremost, just to make sure we're all on the same page, when I'm talking about the final study, it has an August 2023 date with it. We did sort of pace this project in order to stay with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, so we could inform recommendations and the like in there. So there's a reason why they're kind of coming to you together at this point in time. But August 2023 is the document we're considering final for consideration. And we're updating the 2011 document that was done by Warren and Associates. We tried to follow their methodology as closely as we could. There were some improvements, or at least what we consider improvements along the way, that were decided to, again, tell more of the picture as we went through the process. But this is the study that we're updating from 2011. And in terms of the data that we used, we tried to be similar with the previous study in terms of where it was getting its information from. So we relied quite extensively on Wake County tax assessor information that was there. Again, the methodology that came out of the 2011 study, we tried to follow that as closely as we could. And then the annual comprehensive financial report of the town had a tremendous amount of information in it, and we were able to use it extensively. One point of caution here, I just want to be right up front with you. Remember, we started this in January and we talked to you in February about it. And to be consistent with all the data that we had, we're reporting fiscal year 21, 22 information. So just know when you look like at the tax rate and things that are being used, it's the old tax rate that we have right now. And again, that's just to be consistent in our approach. I will tell you, though, on the optimist side, on optimist side, all of the spreadsheets and tools that we've created are being handed over to staff. And we'll do a brief training with how these sketch tools and things work. And so it's not hard to update these things going forward. In fact, to be so bold, I don't think you should hire a consultant, again, at least in the short term. I think the tools are there that you should be able to update this on your own in-house. So hopefully that'll be there for you. So just to kind of paint some of the picture, first, what I call sort of the tablecloth, which is the snapshot of what's going on right now. You're about 70% single-family units, 30% multifamily units. And again, all of this is only town limits. So in the next agenda item, we have a larger planning area for the cost of service studies. It's tied to your budget. We're only town limits when we talk about this. As you would imagine, you have more people living in your single-family homes versus your multifamily homes, 2.72 versus 2.14. Other communities in the region are probably envious, even at a 54, 46 tax-based balance. It shows a real commitment that you've been striving for over the years. About 65% of your taxable value, at least for this study, using the Wake County data is attributed to residential uses. And that becomes important in our methodology, and your occupancy is very high. Now, we had to look at expenses and revenues in order to get a net, net revenue potential. And so that taxable value for many of the departments is what held true, just like it did in the 2011 study. So the 65.1% of the expenses going to residential was a constant unless we had better data available, whether through an interview or other data that we had at our hands. And so you see for general government, administration, finance, economic development, and information technology, we took that standard split. Planning Department and Inspection Department, they actually went and looked at kind of their workload and how much time they spend on these things. So through an interview with department heads, they reported their own numbers. Again, very close to the 65% threshold, but more in tune with what their workload is. Engineering Department did the same thing for us. And then we have the data, and going back to what we were saying in the opening, this is where we were able to really scrub some of the data, was for police, fire, and then the public works portion, that's the street maintenance. Those are the three items. We were also able to break out the ratio of single family to multifamily in terms of the split and the burden for the residential category. We're able to drill down a little bit more for those three. Public works with the solid waste collection was 100% for single family per the policy. We also looked at parks and recreation, the park side of it, the land side of it. We assumed 100% for in-town residents. But the actual programming, we're able to get information about how many people are resident participants and how many are non-resident participants. And we assumed about a 50-50 split for this analysis. So I apologize in advance if you're not a numbers person, because this will turn your stomach a little bit. But I tried to organize it in this way. If you want to compare the columns, the two blue columns are correlated and the two red columns are correlated first. And that's comparing, the blue numbers are the 2023, or 2022 study, the red numbers are the 2011 study. But then if you want to compare how things change between the two studies, if you compare the first set of blue to red numbers, that's how single family changed. If you compare the second set of blue to red numbers on the right, that's how multifamily changed. And for a lot of these, where you saw that 65.1%, or we didn't have the data to drill down, you see the numbers are consistent in the blue. And it's when you get down to the police department, the fire department, and the street maintenance and things, that things are changing quite a bit in some cases. And when you compare from 2011 to 2020, 22, you see that there are some things that are within kind of the first standard deviation, like general government. Administration went up, finance was fairly similar, and you just go down the line. But I bring your attention again to police department, because if you look, the single family went down dramatically. And that's because the data we had showed more calls going to multifamily locations than to single-family locations. But then it flipped on the fire side. More of the call record that we were able to get our hands on had them going to single-family addresses versus multifamily addresses. And then on the, the public work side, again, we have the solid waste, which was a big contributor, as well as the street maintenance. The other thing to note on here is, remember, there is a non-residential component as well to our analysis. So some of these percentages were split out to non-residential customers, so to speak, whether it's streets or police or fire and those kind of things as well. On the revenue side, again, same format for the slide, so you can compare the two blue numbers if you want to stay within the 2022 study and compare single family to multifamily. Or if you want to compare the first and second column, that's single family between the 10-year period, 11-year period, the two columns on the right are the 10-year period for multifamily. And we did add another category where we broke out the ad valorem personal tax by vehicle and other for our study. So that's why we don't have the numbers for the 2011 study. And again, as you start to just kind of go down the line, you see some of these things starting to take hold. The sales tax revenue goes up because you have a greater population now to capture your share. The building permit fees and things go up because you're having more activity and those kind of things that are going on as you go through the process.
Question on. These breakdown, it seems to be a slightly different analysis because they're also doing traffic incidents that aren't commercial.
Residential. Correct.
And correlated, it's just not too.
You're right. So we, we were only as good as our data in that point, as you mentioned. We did try to isolate where it was. So if it was just like a traffic stop or something, we tried to take that out of the analysis in terms of the percentage allocations. But you are right, we're only as good as the data that was, was collected. And some of those that we excluded, you might make a case, depending on coding, whether it was generated by a resident or whether it was generated by an employee. I mean, you're right, it's just part of the disclaimer on the data.
And that's probably something they could tease out on shoplifting calls versus other events, but it's kind of hard to pull that out from, you're trying to keep apples and apples. I understand what you're trying to do.
Right. But it's a good statement to make, though, because, again, under my banner of saying you can keep this up and running now, if there are certain ways you want to ask questions of the data, that's good to know, because then as they're collecting the data, they know to kind of do it that way. So there's still good questions asked now to see whether we can collect data differently in the future. Good question. All right. So in terms of the takeaway here, you see that the table on the top of the slide is actually the numbers from the 2022 study. So when you take all the revenues that are available to the town and compare it to all the expenses the town has, your gap, and this gap would be what you need to cover through property tax, building and land, for a single-family home is $889.26. For a multifamily, it's $687.60. Now, when you compare that to the 2011 study, you'll see the multifamily gap actually shrunk a little bit, and the single-family gap increased a little bit. Now, there's so many variables going in to tell you exactly which variable is driving which. You'd have to do a detailed regression analysis on. But, you know, again, we changed some of our revenues, we changed a little bit of our methodology for some of the categories, and the revenues changed as well. And again, I go back to the fact that you have about 70% single-family and 30% multifamily. So when you're doing the per-unit cost, you've got a different denominator. There's a lot of different things that are going on for the phenomenon. So then the actual, the actual question that was posed is, well, what is the break-even analysis? What does a home have to be valued at in order to break even for you all in terms of the services you provide? And again, this was a little bit of a deviation from the previous report. The previous report said this is what the town of Garner needs to have as value. But what we kind of talked about at the retreat and what we've talked about in planning conversations since is, you don't sell a home just for what Garner needs to cover itself. You sell a home for what it is. And then, so in this case, Wake County and Garner. And even here, we didn't take into account things like Raleigh City Water, some of the Wake County services, like human services and the like. But this is the number we thought was more accurate to say you can't collect Garner taxes without collecting Wake County taxes. So the number goes dramatically up when you look at the out-the-door number, which is the combined tax rate. So it says to break even with a single-family home in Garner, it's $378,235.70. And for a multifamily, it's $292,463.23. On the bottom is a graph that I pulled from the 2011 report, just to compare. But again, to compare apples to apples, if you take the 174,015 in the bar chart and you compare it to the 174,170 where the blue arrow is, you can see we're still within the noise of even where you were at before. And again, part of it is, your expenses are going up, but your revenues are going up as well. And so you're just kind of tracking them together. And actually, your multifamily, again, from the slide before, because your gap closed a little bit, the actual break-even value responded to that. Now, I start to put it on, if you have to wear the hat and you're thinking about development applications or things that are coming to you. And there's two ways to look at this. And one is how productive is the land, right? And when you look at the production of the land and the fact that apartments and multifamily are considered commercial for tax purposes, they're very valuable to you. And you see here from the statistics we're able to collect, and this is from Wake County's open data source from the five-year period 2018 to 2023, that if you, if you give me the grace of rounding, you're about one and a half times more productive with an apartment than you are with a single-family piece of property. But land is not your customer. Your customer are the people that live within the homes. So the other way to also look at this is, your average density, just from what we were able to, to click out, was about 4.71 units per acre. And we're looking at net. So we're looking at, you know, excluding some of the open space and the like. And the average dwelling units per acre on a multifamily is 14. So what you end up wanting to do is you want to say, okay, I'm one and a half times more productive as an apartment or condominium on the land. But then when I think about serving the people that are there, and that's what the, that's what our unit of analysis was, was the unit and the people, you see that you're bringing three times as many people in to that same piece of property. And so that's what's generating the discrepancy between thinking that apartments are a cash cow from the land standpoint. But when you actually put the customers on the land, you've putting so many more customers in line that it starts to balance out and maybe even tips in a different direction. So I just wanted to bring that up to you as something to think about as you contemplate the study. Now, I don't want to appear like the sky is falling, but we wanted to finish the analysis. And so we went and pulled the data. Again, this is five-year average data, which you know in this market, the way homes are increasing in value and those kind of things, even looking back five years is like, the world isn't like this today. But when you take five-year average data, the single-family home assessed value was coming in at $343,213 in the Wake County data set versus the break-even of 378. On the multifamily side, it's coming in at 169,717 versus a break-even of 292,463. Now, the newer products that are coming in are valued much higher. And in fact, the Wake County data that we were able to pull said that the actual homes being sold right now are like at the 385, 385,000 benchmark. Now, it didn't break it out by single-family, multifamily when it gave, when it gives you that number. But you can see that the numbers are higher than what's been the five-year average. So things aren't just gradually going up, they're like a stair step going up in terms of home values.
I ask a quick question, Matt, on that. When you wrote the 169, you're talking about each individual unit, not the building, not building two with 20 apartments. So you're talking each individual unit in the building.
That's correct.
Then you got a building and you got an apartment complex with 300 apartments. So based off this number, you got $120,000 difference times, say, 300 units if they were there.
That's correct. It's per unit. Per address, yeah.
Per address.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to confirm that.
No, you're right. That's right.
Thank you.
And then, again, I'm not trying to put this in to wiggle out of anything, but just the disclaimer here as well is, again, 385 was your median sales value in the current year. But you're, you're like as far away from an evaluation year as you can be right now, right? Because the evaluation for Wake County will be 2024. And I hate to misquote, but I know like in Mecklenburg, when they did it, the range was anywhere from 30 to 35% increase in valuations. I mean, it's crazy. It's astronomical. So I assume that those numbers are going to go up just because of the reevaluation that'll be coming. Now, obviously, it's a policy decision what you do with that and net zero and those kind of things. But those numbers, I think, being five-year averages, as well as being the oldest you can have of the data before reevaluation, tends to skew the results, or at least the outcomes, probably worse than they really are when you actually look on the ground and look at the recent sales. So I just want to put that out there as something to think about.
I have a question.
Yeah.
It seems in the previous slide, you're talking about tax assessed value. And this is, this is sales value.
That's correct.
So there's still that 20 to 30%.
Yep.
Gap that is going to potentially exist.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. I'm just curious to see, like, if you were to, and again, I'm just taking the example from another large metro area. And if you took each of these numbers in the bars and multiply them by 30%, which was their assessed value increase, you know, it's, it's real money you're talking about. So, but again, good distinction to make. The sales price, which is what we were able to get from Wake County Tax Assessor, that's the sales price. It doesn't mean that's the assessed value. So good point to make as well. And then as we did build this bridge between the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan and this cost of service study, we did have some conclusions at the end of the cost of service study that fed some of the recommendations for the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. And we talked about a couple of concepts. The first one being value capture. And going back to some of the conversations we've had on the comprehensive plan, you know, design matters. Creating amenities matter. They raise the value of the properties that abut it or are nearby. I think I've told you the story before that when I was relocated from Florida to here originally, I moved to Cary, and I wanted the lot on the Greenway. And they said, that's great. It's $7,000. And I said, where'd this come from? And they said, that's the lot premium to be on the Greenway. So those kind of things exist, and they're real, and it's real data. And there's other studies that we cite in the, in the report that actually prove that out, that there is actually a bump in assessed value based on the places you create, which is why we build the bridge. The second item we have here is talking about development intensities and densities. And we go in and we actually have, we did the case study for North Hills, because it's the one you can probably see from, from your backyard because of the buildings are getting so tall, right? But they're putting in a lot more value in the same-sized piece of land. And so it just kind of churns itself almost exponentially in terms of what it's, it's generating in terms of tax production for the city of Raleigh in this case. And so as you're putting that in and the service area staying smaller, you tend to be able to get a bigger net return. And so when we look at Garner Forward and we're looking at some of those areas, we're talking about mixed use and. talking about mixed use and density or intensity, some of the things we're talking about would allow you pretty big windfalls, I think, in terms of net revenue, when you're approaching some of the major activity centers that we're talking about in that plan. We also just allude on the left-hand side here about active property. And the reason we do this is, in the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, some of the policies we're talking about is being proactive on economic development. You have the great case study in your backyard, the old Kmart becoming a new ink, you know, the new biomedical facility and the like. Other communities would love to have that issue. I left a community yesterday where they have three big box stores that are empty, and they're like, "What are we going to do with them? What are we going to do with them?" You know? But, so kind of thinking ahead, and being proactive in economic development, the like, it's just not a, it's a no-brainer, but an active property and a property that is well-kept is just more valuable to the property itself, as well as the abutting properties. And then, the last item we talk about is just, again, the design and character of places, and what you demand is your minimum threshold for what you're willing to accept. And frankly, it's, I'll just repeat the first sentence, "Simply stated, attractive building architecture and good site design sells, and sells at a premium, which increases the total assessed values for neighborhoods, business parks, or mixed-use activity centers, and the real property tax they generate." So, again, it's not that you have to give away an incentive and double density and all those kind of things, but it's more just like, what are you going to demand to create these places that people want to invest in, and people want to move to and experience? And that will give you more real property tax generation as a byproduct of that. So... The other thing I just want to mention, because it is kind of sort of hot off the presses or in development, is, the consultant, as City explained, has turned in the first beta version of a sketch tool. We're testing it right now, making sure that there's no fatal flaws, the logic makes sense, that it's useful, or could be useful in a staff report, or something of that nature. So, nothing that I can unveil today, but we are really close on that, and we'll be beta-testing it in the coming days, and then we'll be able to reveal it. But everything that we've shown you in the report is being created in a tool where you feed in some input numbers on a spreadsheet, and using the same factors, elasticities, and the like, it will spit out the number in terms of net revenue, and it can be done on a project basis. So, preview of coming attractions. That's coming soon.
I have a question on that.
Please.
What's sort of the methodology for testing it? Are you going back and looking at previously approved projects, and measuring the real data generated from real projects?
So, right now, my first pass at it has been, I went through your old agendas, and I picked projects that are either recently been rezoned or considering rezoning now. And I've been running some of those numbers to kind of just see, in real time, where are the places that the market wants to develop now and invest now, to see what the values are. Without kind of revealing too much, I'll tell you, the real interesting part is, remember, the Cost of Service Study does not calculate property tax. It's calculating the gap. So, the real magic, in terms of how these projects behave, comes down to the comparable that you use for the property tax. And so, that's where we have to create a sound methodology of which comparable would we want to choose, and create a methodology so that you don't choose one that's in your favor, and the applicant chooses one that's in their favor, and it just comes down to an assumptions battle, if you know what I mean. So, we want to create a way that, whether it's looking at past products, and then what product categories do you want to think of? Do you do it by lot size? Do you do it by type of home, or whatever? But we've got to find a way to make sure the comparables isn't, it's an honest methodology before we've applied it, so that you start to get the bias of how you want to apply it. We want to make sure it's defendable just in practice. So, that's what we're doing, is those kind of things.
I think it'd be useful to go back a little bit further. I know there have been projects that have been approved in the past three or four years that have come out of the ground.
Yep.
And so, then you can actually measure the reality of that assessment. That might be very helpful, too.
Yeah. No, that's a good idea. And, the way the tool, at least in concept, I'm setting it up, is, you can compare two things side by side, so like a current and proposed program, if it's a rezoning, or if you just want to know what a project's going to be by right, you just leave the proposed blank, and you run the current, and it would tell you what that would be. So, we're trying to create a dynamic tool. Now, full disclaimer, so you hear it from me, you know, any tool has averages and assumptions. That means that it might give you a false positive, or something of that nature. So, on a project-by-project basis, you would want to either ask for information, or seek out information, to make sure that some of the general assumptions, like in the Cost of Service Study, apply, or if they need to be calibrated. And that would be on a case-by-case basis. So, to there, I only have one slide left, which is to take other comments or questions you might have on the Cost of Service Study.
So, thank you, Mr. Nunkster. There's a lot of information there, a lot of figures, as you said.
Yes.
I've tried to read through most of it, and I need to go back and review any number of the portions of it, but it's good information. So, I'll see what questions council has. Start to my left with Mr. Singleton, maybe.
Yes, Matt. On page 50 of our book here, you talk about break-even residential values analysis. The point where the town's portion of available taxes earned equals the net revenue gap calculated previously for the analysis, 889 for a single-family and 687 for a multifamily. So, you're saying that's the gap that we're short, or for each unit, the way our properties are evaluated, or that's the number we use for each unit?
Right. So, what we've done is, we've listed all of your expenditures first, so we know out-the-door what it costs for you to serve a unit, total cost. Then, we line up next to that, all the revenues except property tax, to figure out, well, how much property tax do you need to charge in order to get to zero? So, the number you need to charge is to get to a tax bill that somebody writes you a check for 889, or 678, or whatever it is. That's what you're trying to get from each unit is a check for that amount, or a payment for that amount. Then, you'll break even. And so, how do you get a payment of that amount is how we backfigure what the value of the home needs to be. But, yeah, what those two numbers are, is the minimum number you need to get in a payment from each unit in order to break even.
To make sure I was understanding it correctly.
Yeah.
And again, the gap in, for each individual apartment, which you say needs to be 292 at an evaluation, but it's currently around 169, that $120,000 gap. So, if there's 300 units, that's $36 million. So, the whole, so what we're seeing, what this is leading us to discover is that a project like that is not, is that short for the entire project for the cost of town services, from a property value evaluation standpoint?
Yeah, from, yeah, from an assessed value standpoint, you would, either through the reevaluation or something else, it'd be in your best interest to close that gap, to get as close to 292 as you can get.
And you said, and some of those are from older apartment complexes, because some are new ones that have been approved. So, some of this is older units versus newer units, which have a higher individual cost, valuation value associated with them.
That's correct.
Just like with homes. But, the homes was easier to close up quicker, because the apartments are taken, it's different, because it's not built out, and each unit's been approved, and you do not know what that value may be yet.
You have a smaller sample size of multifamily.
Smaller sample. That's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Ms. Berry, do I go to you?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, anything?
Very good report, as always.
Thank you.
Interesting numbers to digest.
Lot of numbers.
Mr. Dellinger.
Looking at the break-even, you take a project with 300 single-family homes, 500 multifamily, 800 units. That generates a $600,000 deficit for us. So, when you approve a project of 800 units, we're, well, we've got to increase taxes a penny.
Or the value of the new construct, because some of the, like, for example, some of the beta testing I've done, I have found that some of the newer neighborhoods could be as much as three times more valuable as your older neighborhoods. So, they could close the gap pretty quick.
So, the other issue, I think, with the break-even analysis is, a lot of the, all these projects require a significant amount of expenditure before they're generating revenue. So, for years, there are police hiring, fire needs to go to construction sites, you have inspections, you have planning, all these other expenditures, these sort of shadow expenditures, that go into these projects before they come out of the ground, because all these calculations are based on what's there, not what it takes to get it there. So, then, by the time it's there, it's not generating a profit, a net, a positive revenue return. And so, what it really means is that the current residents are shouldering all of the cost for all the growth, for something that's going to come in, and also not pay for it, so.
Yeah. And I'll give you an example of even just the last year. I think I've told you all, since we've been together for the year, that, you know, I just built a new home, and we're going to be moving. Well, all of this year, I'm still assessed as undeveloped land. I won't be assessed till developed land till next year, but yet, I'm there. And so, I'm generating the need for service, but I'm actually getting one year of a discounted rate before I have to ante into the game. So, you're right. There are little wrinkles like that, that you, you know, as part of the real-life story that you tell, those are in there. The data sometimes doesn't let us parse it out that well, but...
I think what it, it clouds the amount of revenue we need, because you say, "When this comes out of the ground, it'll generate this," but there are all these other expenses before that. And so, they may need to find something to capture that, because there's this un, we'll never get a return on that investment, because whatever you're putting on the ground is never going to pay for it. So, that's a little bit of, just a concern that there are these shadow expenses associated with growth. Another question I had was, have other municipalities done these cost-of-service delivery studies in our area, and are they done in such a way that we could compare?
I mean, I, the first part of the question is yes. In fact, two or three weeks ago, I was sitting in a council chambers in Knightdale, and they were going through an application for annexation. All of a sudden, a cost-of-service analysis showed up on the screen. I was like, "Oh," and I like start really paying attention, because I want to know how they compare. Everyone does it just a little bit differently, as you can imagine. Everyone wants their little twist on it, but the data available from Wake County and all that kind of stuff is valuable for everybody. Part of the question, again, when you apply this to an actual project, is, you may be looking at, you know, the out-the-door cost is kind of what I affectionally call it on the Cost of Service Study. But then, some other communities I work with will also kind of put a value, maybe even not a dollar value, but just a personal value on some things that that project brings. And so, it may build two miles of a greenway, or it might, you know, and so you're like, "You know what? The cost of service isn't as great as I had hoped it would be, but this is what else we're getting from it as well." And so, it's got to be a holistic conversation, but it does provide a valuable piece of information. The other place, again, not in the region, but I used to do these studies for Cornelius, and the way they did it was, they wanted me to do them as an independent person, not staff, or the developer, or they wanted me just to be unbiased. And so, I would insert a two-to-three-page impact analysis into the staff report. So, yeah, I mean, people are using these things to make decisions.
Because I think the commercial ends up being negative as well. And so, I'm trying to figure out, is that a function of the type of commercial we have, the age of the commercial that we have? Is it depreciated to oblivion because it's so old? So, I kind of want to see what other communities are doing on the commercial side, since we're also negative per thousand square foot on the commercial, but we also don't have that much new commercial, so...
Yeah. Now, on the, I will tell you that, on the non-residential, first of all, we did have some data limitations, and so that's got to evolve over time, you know, to really get a precise answer. But while the revenue is, creates a gap for like sales tax and obvious things, because you have to have residential to get that money, its property values are pretty darn good. And so, they're probably covering some of the gap on the residential side, as you were talking about, like the startup costs and things. They are very productive in terms of what they're producing on the property tax. But again, the sketch tool will be able to bear some of that out.
Thank you.
Mr. Vance, any questions?
Good report. I have no questions as of time.
Anybody want to circle back with questions?
I appreciate all the information. It's a lot of information, a little more detailed than the previous one we had. I told my wife last night, and I was reading through it again. Either I halfway understand, or I'm the dumbest person up here, because I was trying to... That's what I told her. I kept reading, I kept reading, especially the back few pages, where you made your summations, and that's what I was trying to understand the most. But it's a lot of good information. It's, I mean, you've got to read over it to understand it, and I appreciate your presentation. It helps.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. That covers that portion, anyway, huh?
Yep.
We're not through with you yet, are we?
No, I, sorry. I was asking Jeff if he wanted to say anything in between, but we're good. We're ready to go.
All right, all right.
Sorry. All right. Just want to make sure I opened the right line. Okay, for item number two?
Yes, sir.
All right. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. This has been a fantastic project, and I'd love to see it moving forward, and so I look forward to the conversation today as well. I have put together a slide presentation, just to get everything back to the front of our minds and set the table again, because it's been some time since we've spoken. But it's really, just to put a framework out there. Obviously, we're here really to answer any questions that you all have, and so just kind of let me know as we go through. Please either stop me within the slide, because we have that as a reference, or you can ask me questions at the end, whichever way you'd like to, is fine. So, I just start, because I do come to you in different capacities. So, today, I'm coming to you as a representative, or someone who can answer questions about version three of the public draft document, and it's actually the public hearing draft document. It's on the project website right now. And as I mentioned, I'm going to do some, just kind of setting the situation, but then I'm available, and we can have a conversation on whatever topic you want to have a conversation about. All right. So, in terms of project background, I'll just start here, and it's a slide we've been using quite often, but it's the pillars of how we did our planning process. So, we did try to engage early and often with the community, and I'll show you some of that as we go through our process. I feel confident, just like the last agenda item, that we did a lot of good data gathering and synthesis, and I feel good about the numbers supporting what we're talking about. And then, some of these best practices, whether they're from the region or from the country, we were able to try a couple of things out, because, you know, there are times where I think we want to make sure Garner is the leader in the region of some ideas and things. And so, rather than just replicating what somebody else has done in the region, we've introduced some new ideas as well, which I think could be really prosperous for you going forward. So, I take us back to September 7th of 2022. That's when we started this project. We started it out with a member, with a meeting of the Project Steering Committee, for which you all were members, so thank you for that again. But this, we kind of started back in September of last year. And we had a process that we followed, and just building left to right at the highest level. We got the house in order under what's called Planning Cycle 1, so we just made sure we had everything, all the data exchanged, the protocols in place. Then, we really spent a lot of time in Planning Cycle 3, which was us doing our book reports, and our homework, and our data synthesis, to try to make sure that we had good footing to stand on, and we knew what we were going to reach for in terms of a strong vision. Planning Cycle 4, we spent a good amount of time doing scenario planning. I'll go over that in more detail here as part of the presentation. But we did not just pick a future and then defend it, and put our head in the sand, but we actually had multiple futures that were out there, and we got an impact analysis back, and we shared information and got reactions to put the maps in the document, feel more confident about that. Then, we built a framework around these, and this becomes Chapter 2 within the document, but we have the different maps that are in there. Some of the high-level policies and the like are in there. We have the focus area studies, that were the drawings that were done, the hand drawings that you see in Chapter 2. And then, we've been going through iterations of the plan up until this point. So, just kind of rational planning process from start of data collection, all the way to having a document in place. Highlights in the planning process that we have here, again, stakeholder interviews. We were thinking we were going to do 12 of those. We ended up doing 30. The Steering Committee, again, for which you were part of, with the Planning Commission, we were going to have... The steering committee, again, for which you were part of with the planning commission, we were going to have four meetings. We ended up having five meetings, which was good. The strategic advisory groups, we had three of those, remember scenario planning, community character, and public involvement and advocacy. And so we had three, three groups going with multiple meetings for each group. And then we had this on the table initiative where we created a meeting in a box and people could have a meeting without us even being in the room. And so we had three people turn in meeting summaries from that. We also had our community ideas exchange workshop. I don't know what it means, but remember there was a hurricane that was supposed to come over us that night as well. And here we are again. So I don't know what that means, but we had an ideas exchange workshop. I thought it was well attended, the people that were there participated, we got a lot of good information. And we summarized all of that in the data way that we could in Excel. So we looked for trends and averages and those kinds of things of what the people were telling us. Then we did do our scenario planning using a software called Community Viz, which is a decision support software. All of those models are also available as part of the final transmittal of project files back to town staff. So those are available. We secured a license of this software on behalf of the town, so you can do this in the future if you want to. But we looked at three different futures, we looked at your current UDO and how it was laid out. We looked at the previous Garner Forward Plan. And then we looked at some of the ideas that were emerging in our planning process and applied them on a map. And if you remember from those conversations, in the current UDO, you've got a lot of green and kind of more of a holding pattern of rule. In the adopted Garner Forward Plan that you have now, there was that big swing to residential and large home residential back then. And then now the pendulum kind of swung back more into jobs and tax based balance and creating different home and neighborhood choices and the like. And that's where it ended up on what we studied. And then we did some more analysis and we went back out for the draft plan recommendations workshop in February. Again, we took over the auxiliary room at the recreation center and it was a drop in session, we were there all day. I even, this room had to be used for something else. I remember we even set up in the atrium for a couple hours afterwards, just to make sure we could catch some people. And had a lot of good conversations about this and got a lot of good comments through email afterwards. And then speaking of email electronically, we had the project website. We ended up with just shy of, well, 2,890 visitors, the number's right there, so we can be exact. And you can kind of see the way the graph is going. You can see when the document was released in February, we started to get more interest every time a document was released. So we were able to get fingerprints on things. When you go to the site itself where the documents were, now this is all the different versions that have been posted. We had 697 views. So somebody's reading the document. And, and again, we were able to track that. Now, which version it is, I would have to go in more detail and know, but a version has been looked at at least 697 times. So then I fast forward to February 21st of this year, which is when we had our first document. We had our first tangible thing that came out of the planning process, the first shot at the deliverable. And that's kind of what we did in February of this year. And since that time, we've gone through four iterations of it. We have the consultant draft for public release, which is if you just wanted the MAT plan, you should adopt the February plan. That was the one I gave all my recommendations for. But some of those were frankly, you know, a little crazier. I didn't have the local knowledge everybody had. So then we had the public hearing draft that came out in April. And that was the first cut where people were able to review it. We did make some revisions in July, and then we made some additional revisions in August, all within the framework of a public hearing draft that we had as part of this process. And then in terms of presentations and briefings, just we've been on a track with the planning commission as well as with you all as town council. We've met with planning commission four different times, starting in April to August. And then I go all the way back to the board retreat, I took credit for the board retreat. And from there forward, we've been able to meet together, was it six times? And I know I, I think I'm missing one, it was like April 14th or something, you all had a joint session, but I wasn't able to make it, so there might even be another date in there, I can't remember. So then if you kind of just think about how we got to where we are now in this process of having a document and talking about it at the dais and the podium, I also want to put in context kind of how you get things done. And so the comprehensive plan is a fantastic document, I call it the point of the spear, but you have to have the entire spear in order to get something done. And so again, we took direction from the town strategic plan, and we know that we need the UDO to operationalize everything, to get into the weeds and actually make things happen. And then off shooting of that, you have all these other plans that need to coordinate with this broad vision and actually get into the detail that's needed to get to the final answers. So whether it's other master plans like transportation, pedestrian plan, or parks, recreation, cultural resources, or it's budgeting things, or engineering design standards, or small area plans, all of those things have some form of direction within the Garner Forward Plan in order to execute and put more refinement on some of these ideas. And so this is an analogy I started using a few years ago, and it seems to work, so I'm going to try it again tonight, which is the scale of these two things. So the first scale is the comprehensive plan, and I think of that as if we're up in the hot air balloon and we're over the tulip fields. We're in Denmark and we're just kind of taking in everything and we're like, oh, I understand how generally these fields are oriented to each other. Oh, look, there's different colors and they must mean something, they're different sizes and the like. But I can't tell you everything about it because I'm too high, like I'm only seeing things very broadly. Then when you get into the unified development ordinance, that's where a lot of the rules and policies and specifics come in. And so you zoom in almost to where you can see the veins of the flower. And I'm going to show you an example of that with the document. But that's where a lot of the questions get answered and a lot of rubber, the rubber hits the road in terms of getting things done and getting what you want as a community. And so the example I give is, this is the discussion out of our current plan, which you see version three in the top right corner, for what is the right neighborhood? What are the components of a neighborhood in the character typology map? And we describe it as terms of having different housing types and how does open space play into it? How are things organized? It gives order to what a neighborhood should look like in the future. And then you had the development change and intensity map that kind of extrudes it. So the example I've been giving lately is when you're looking at this, you're in Google Maps, looking down at the world. And then when you get into the development change map, it's like you picked the little yellow person and you put it on the street. And now you're in the street view and you're like, oh, now this is what it feels like to be here and the like. And so this starts to talk about how tall things should be, what the uses should be like, what the streets should focus on, how transportation should be addressed. But this provides more granularity to it, which is a baton passing to the UDO. But when you get to the UDO itself, and full disclosure, this is an example from Portchester, New York. So don't look for this in your current UDO, but this is a project I did up in New York. But if you look at it, it has a title to the district, just like we have for neighborhood. And then these, all of these pages go with that one district, just like we just had two pages in the comprehensive plan. But the first set might talk about what types of buildings are there, how many buildings can be on there? How much percentage of the lot can you occupy? Then you might go into, on the left, you see there's the setback requirements or the build two requirements that are in there. On the right hand side, you see, well, what kind of buildings can I put there? What setbacks or what type of encroachments do you allow for a stoop or an air conditioner? Like, all those rules you have to really think about before you build something. And then descriptions about what types of homes you can put in that neighborhood, where they can be placed, the list of permitted uses that go with that zoning category, how the streets need to be designed in that area, and this might be part of your engineering design standards. And then how does open space get applied within this area? So you can see it's exponential how much more information you need in the UDO than you need in the general, the comprehensive plan. But those seeds need to be planted in the comprehensive plan to get what you want or to be able to act with confidence for demanding what you want through the UDO and a development application. So now I just want to shift to a couple of the big ideas that came out of the planning process, just to remind ourselves for a conversation. The first one was to lead with character and everything that the town does. So when a development application shows up now, you say, first off in your head, does this fit into my vision of Garner? Does it have porches if you want porches? Does it have shade trees if you want shade trees? Does it have homes fronting on open space if that's what you want? Like you just set that tone for character. And the descriptions in the Garner Forward Plan now start to put you on there so that people are on notice of kind of what you're expecting and what your intended outcomes are to be. But again, we wanted to lead with character in the plan. The other thing was to try to connect open space and be meaningful. And frankly, don't take for granted that open space shouldn't be everywhere. So even in the top right corner that you see there, in an industrial development, those employees might want a place to spill out to and eat lunch. Or sometimes in those industrial parks ends up being a brewery or a test kitchen or something that can actually benefit from a little bit of open space. So it's kind of setting the tone that open space should be everywhere. And then when you're starting to look at how the neighborhoods are designed, how are, how is open space in the middle of the neighborhood versus the triangles in the back corner that nobody wants to develop anyways? Or in the lower left corner, how do you create gathering places in your activity centers? How do you emphasize greenways in the lower right? So how is open space connected and comprehensive? We also try to recognize some of the complexities of mixed use development. And frankly, I think the last time I was here, I told you as well, this is probably the hardest job of the plan. Because you want to set the expectations, but you don't want to back yourself into a corner either. There's a reason why most mixed use projects are either a conditional district or some type of planned district where the zoning is written for that project. It's because they're so unique in terms of the things you want to get out of that project that the plan itself is to set the bar. And the plan itself is to create the expectation, but the UDO and the zoning that gets written for that project, a lot of times is how you really get what you want in the end. And then again, going back to sort of what we were talking about from the cost of services study, how do we emphasize the design, whether it's building architecture or site design, to increase the value of that property and increase the experiences people have that they're willing to pay more for that experience, which will help your bottom line? And then we talked a lot about development densities. And remember, there's different places around the community in the planning area that we're talking about different densities in terms of intended outcomes. So we have lower, we have some medium size, and we have some places where we're looking at some substantial density, even if it means, if it means you have to wait a while. But there are some pieces of land and where they're located and the like, that you could really get some bang for your buck. And so we've even identified a couple of those in our document. And then the last thing, we close on with a big idea is making sense and sense of the, of the landscape. So sense again is whether it's tax based balance or value capture or those kinds of things. But to make sure you're a productive, sustainable community long into the future. And sense with an S is to create places that are memorable, that matter, that create a good impression on people. And we have some of that in the plan as well. All right, so now I'm going to go through the document changes. And what I'm going to do is, just because I want to make sure we had it out there, I have them in here. I'm going to go through them fairly quickly, but stop me on one of them if you want to talk about it, if that's okay. But I don't, I don't want to exhaust you either and have to create a halftime or something of that nature. So in terms of the document changes, again, I go back first to the graphic between the different iterations of the reports. From February to April, we made 122 revisions to the document. From April to July, we made 54 revisions. And from July to August, we made 55 revisions. So what I'm showing you in these slides that are coming up is actually the cumulative effect of all of these. So I'm taking, when you look at the yellow in the document where it says highlighted changes, those are the changes from April to now. We didn't delete them after we made the changes, we kept them in. So if you're looking at those documents and you see the yellow in them, it's from April to whenever the current version is, that's what's changed. So that's just so you're aware. So in terms of what's changed, you know, we have some matrices that we added new dots to, to create new relationships. We made some small text edits, we made some big text edits, including new sections or new policies. We updated some maps and we have a memo on that. And actually, for those of you may be watching, I just updated to the website today, the map changes. We were able to actually capture those in a memo, and so those are available as we go through. And then some of the data even needed to be updated, so we did that as well. So again, just going through quickly and then stop me where you want to, but we had an incorrect reference on All American City, I called it an All American City. So we just made small text edits like that. We renamed Fort Bragg to Fort Liberty to be with current times. We reorganized the guiding principles under the three banners of quality of life, fiscal sustainability and stewardship, and smart development and growth. Then this is something I'll toggle back and forth on, but again, we have a memo on this now, but we changed the map and the map basically changed where we had, we added new neighborhood activity centers. In some locations, we shifted them in other locations. And we did some massaging around 70 and 40, where we added a couple or recognized the retail employment centers that are on the ground today or planned in the near future. And so we have those, if you want to during discussion, we can stop on that slide. Also going back to that statement I made about mixed use being sometimes the hardest nut to crack, we've added more information to set the right expectations. So we've talked a little bit in terms of like, does it have a discernible center? How large are these things usually? What do they include in them? Are the buildings small format or large format? And again, it's not the last word, you'll have your unified development ordinance and your zoning to get it right in terms of organization, but this sets the right expectation about what the ingredients are for that recipe. And we do it for all the activity center categories that we have.
It's a question to, it's a very, it's a big jump to go from not having that level of specificity to this level of specificity. It seems very specific for a comprehensive plan.
Yes.
And that gives me just a little bit of, of pause. Because it sort of limits our scope a little bit on the scale of what some of this could be. Talked about the conditional zoning being a real strong tool in our toolbox for manipulating a project to, with all of its different pieces. So I do have some concern with some of the specific numbers on square footage that are in, in these.
The thing I'll say, because I'm being as honest as I can with all of you, right? Those weren't in the February document, which means I didn't think they needed to be in there. And I was responding to comments and questions we've gotten. So you would not have a fight for me to pull this back a little bit to just get the exact things you want and then let the zoning take over from there. I was trying to react to comments and questions we've been getting, whether from this body or the planning commission or, you know, all different comments have come in that, that needed specificity. But I wouldn't, I, even as a professional planner, I wouldn't mind pulling this back a little bit and letting zoning take, take hold of some of these issues. I mean, just to be very honest is.
When I was looking at other projects in the triangle, like Iron Works and Fenton and some of these others, when you start comparing the square footage to the land, some of it's not the same. And so you're kind of limiting a developer's vision that they may have for something. And then you've, you've locked it in, in this comprehensive plan. And then you say, well, your comprehensive plan doesn't say you want this.
Right.
And so then you've got to make a really difficult decision. That's why, again, I think the conditional zoning helps take care of a lot of that because that's where we can be flexible and help something fit somewhere that we might not have even comprehended before.
Yeah, I mean, just think of phasing, right? Just doesn't even contemplate phasing because it's so specific to a parcel. So, no, I mean, you wouldn't break my heart if we took some of the specificity out of here, if that's what, you know, consensus is. Then in the map itself, we did make a couple of other small map changes. You see basically, the biggest ones are south of 540. And the idea was if you're extending the extraterritorial jurisdiction, don't do that just to keep it more rural. Like, there's a reason you're extending your ETJ, and the reason is to be able to guide and steer development. And so we, we kind of amped up the development that could occur within your ETJ area. Otherwise, it's not really worth the expansion. So that's kind of what we were thinking on there. Mixed use, we did add a couple of qualifiers in there. And maybe going back to the previous comment, you know, maybe this is enough to set the tone of what you want without the numbers in it. But it does say, you know, you should have a discernible center, you should have different home types. You should have, you know, this might be enough to set the expectation as you go through the process.
A comment on that related also to the mixed use on, I don't know the page number, but it talks about vertical versus horizontal mixed use. And one concern I still have is this including single family dwellings in mixed use when your goal is density. And if you look at the image of this mixed use over here, there's not a single family home to be seen. And so I think we want to move away, either you have a more rural, single family type neighborhood somewhere, or you go in the density direction, which. neighborhood somewhere, or you go in the density direction, which really fits in with the fiscal breakeven analysis we were talking about on density. So I just, I don't think single-family homes should be included in a mixed-use project.
Yeah. For me, I think it comes down to size of the project again. So let's say you have 120 acres come in at one time.
Yep.
They need the rooftops, and some of them would probably be single-family, even just the section we have about transition to adjacent neighborhoods and stuff. But that's a large project to do that, you know what I mean? So that's, that's kind of where you're saying is, maybe in this regard, it's just setting the expectation for when you allow it, but smaller projects, you would probably de-emphasize single-family for the reasons you brought up.
And that sort of goes back to the conversation we were having before, and let's have the strict standard, and if it is a large, large project, and single-family makes sense for transitional reasons, then let's make that exception.
As part of the...
At that time, but not set the expectation when they're reading it fresh, that, oh, I can put single-family homes in this mixed-use project, and 40% of them are going to be single-family homes. Again, it's that expectation setting that I think is so important with the document.
Yeah, yeah.
Comments from others, anybody? Okay.
We did have some very small, I say small, I guess it depends where you are in the world, if it's next to you, it's big, but we did have some changes that occurred in terms of the development and change intensity map as well, that we can talk about. This goes into, the comment just came in, in terms of the prevailing development pattern. Again, if I'm giving my professional recommendation, I added the word prevailing to that column, because I did not want it to be absolute. There are examples where, you know, not everything needs to be stacked or in-block, depending on the size of the development again. And so I added the word prevailing there on purpose, just so you're aware. And then there was a lot of talk at the Planning Commission level about this whole sense of enclosure idea, which is just, how wide is the street or the public area compared to the buildings that are next to you? And so they wanted some direction on that, and they want it to be contextual. So that's why I did it where, based on how tall the buildings are going to be, helps me influence how wide that gap or space should be between the buildings. So that's what this is here. Again, just some more matrix things to match things up. I don't know where that yellow box came from. It's not an editing software, so that graphic just got misplaced. We did make sure that even though you see curvilinear streets, we say that we don't want more of them, we're recognizing an existing condition, so we wanted to be clear there. Jeff had noted many meetings ago that my activated and activate space got messed up in the software, so we did that. We added a spotlight on sense of enclosure. Again, the Planning Commission had asked us for definition and some graphics to be able to understand and apply this concept, so we went ahead and did that. We added some new information about what it meant to have transitions and things between the infill development and the like. You can see, for an example, the picture on the left-hand side of the page in the middle, that home looks like it's going to eat the home next to it, right? Because it's so much larger than that. So, you know, what rules do you put in place for context and transition? We also added some additional home affordability provisions within the plan, based on some comments we got. We made a new reference to this graphic, I won't even speak the other phrase, right? So we don't talk about it.
There weren't any changes, but on page 94 and 95, we're talking about the land use mix and development intensity, and that was where I was referencing this sort of vertical or horizontal, we don't really care. And I think, I care. I think we should have a preference, because we've been doing the horizontal mixed-use, which is that lower density, lower revenue, sound development. What recommendations do you make for having a preference in the language, so that, again, when somebody, a developer's reading this, when they come to us, they're saying, I see you have a preference for this, and not just, you want either of these?
We could think about sort of describing like a step approach. So it might be like, you know, a mixed-use of this activity center type, because, you know, we have the different categories. You know, maybe we say, in order to have a community center that's functioning the way we define it, you need at least four blocks of vertical mixed-use adjacent to each other, to create a walkable environment. And then, if it wants to transition, then it has to be in-block, meaning at least the block changes. And then after that, maybe it's something else, you know, I think, so we can set some expectations without actually dictating which direction they go and all that. That's all a zoning issue. So, but we might be able to think up something on that.
Thank you.
Matt, let me, let me ask you, I'm not sure where this fits into the larger discussion here, and so if we should leave it off, or wait till later on, you can do that. Obviously, you know, when this process was started, the term commuter rail was being used quite a bit in Wake County and a variety of places, and here in Garner, obviously, it was going to have some impact on us. I'm sure you've kept up with more recent iterations of that, and it appears that commuter rail, as we were discussing it, is not going to happen, not in the foreseeable time. So my question to you is, do you, I mean, is that anything significant in your mind as relates to Garner and its downtown area? Obviously, we had anticipated at some point probably having a transit station somewhere, so just a quick comment on that, if you care to, or if you'd rather save it till another time, that's fine.
No, I'll comment on it now. Yeah, I read about it this week, with the decision of the federal government to not see the numbers they wanted to see for ridership and the like. But what I also read from that was that they said, they kind of encouraged the development to get the numbers up, so it's kind of a chicken or egg thing, right? So I think for me, in a document that's a visionary document, you keep it in, because it's aspirational, if it does come back, or, at least at this point in time, again, I need to do my homework, but I assume it's still in the Campo plans, in terms of a wish list, even though it hasn't hit anywhere. I would keep it in just to show support, but I think when you make investment decisions from, like, what capital projects you want to do, or things like that, you need to take into account what its horizon is. But if I read between the lines correctly, the federal representative was saying you didn't have enough ridership, do what you can to put more ridership in the court, or... So that, to me, is still investing in downtown.
Well, probably so, even though, also, I think there was a caveat there, where we talked about maybe shifting a considerable portion of the emphasis to bus rapid transit, and go ahead and build out that system in the meantime, as an alternative to
Yes.
the classic commuter rail, I guess.
Yep. And to that end, you know, we have embraced the southern extension down 401, and we've taken it all the way to Clayton on 70. So I think in there, if that became what everyone was going to invest in, because my understanding is, the first investment's going to be New Bern out east. But if South ends up catching fire, and that becomes the next one they're going to do, then I think you say, look, our plan embraces bus rapid transit, and maybe we'd like to look at how it could eyebrow up into our downtown, or something of that nature, but you're already embracing that, if that ends up being the preferred technology. So I would keep both in, really, to put yourself in the best position.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'm going to pick up some speed here, because these are just text changes that were done. This was one that the recommendations were in the paragraph, but we keyed into the drawing. This is just so that the drawing reinforced the words. Again, more text. This was added in, this is why I know, I think you had an extra meeting I wasn't at, because I watched it, and Jeff gave a great answer that, why is this in here now? And it was because of the cost of service study, that there was a connection being made with this new spotlight that was added. Again, just more text changes that were made through. You see, there was a comment from Planning Commission about strengthening or recognizing floodplains, and that they have environmental merits, as well as just flood control. We did have one park change that we moved down on 401, and then we just recognized that while this plan's been going on, you know, some of the improvements of the recreation center have gotten either finished or close enough, that we should recognize it as something in place, so we did that. The Greenway Network, it was just a quick text change, just to make sure people read the document, I actually, I put in an error in the legend, and people found it, so thank you for doing that. No, I don't know what happened, but for whatever reason, just, we had the wrong legend in there.
Matt, so fast, I didn't get a chance...
Oh yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So on page 132, and on theme five, and it talks about connectivity, one of my favorite topics.
Yep.
And it's referenced there, on 132, how they should be connected unless they're ecological or topographical. And then it's also mentioned, there are these references to curvilinear streets and cul-de-sacs on 77. And one word I want to have in there is safety. Because there are the ecological and all these others, but safety needs to be a consideration when it comes to connectivity, every single time. So I'd like that language added, because I think it's come up for this council so many times, with the connection of older neighborhoods, and safety is sort of the number-one theme that keeps coming up on that connectivity.
Okay.
So I'd like, I think it'd be helpful, it's in the comprehensive plan that we're highlighting.
To reinforce that, yeah, sure. And I'm sorry, I was just reading body language, but if you need me to slow down anywhere, let me know, for sure. But the transit network, Mr. Man, this is where we were talking a little bit about some of the ideas, and you have both the blue and the orange line on there, so I think we're in pretty good shape. And then we just added, this was the comment, and Councilman Dudgeon, I think it was your comment about the survey, and I said, well, we didn't do one for this plan, but we actually added in here that as part of the monitoring, you may want to fund and do a survey, in order to get a report back. When we work in Pinehurst, for example, because they have such a resort mentality, they do an annual survey, and then they use that survey to prioritize their capital projects, and all kinds of stuff that they do. But again, they're treating themselves like a resort, where you're that person with the iPad at Disney World as you're leaving, and they want all your information before you leave, so... But we put that in there, if that's something you want to do, we think it's a good idea, so we added that in there. All right. So kind of closing remarks, so we can have a conversation, I can answer any more questions. Just being point-blank honest with you, you've got different opportunities ahead of you right now. Since April, you've had the time to review the document, you can take as much time as you need to review it, for obvious reasons. But as I look at it, just coming to you, not as a resident or business owner or anything else, there's kind of four options that you have. The first one is you adopt the document as you have it, just based on some of the comments we've gotten today, that doesn't happen, right? Because there's some additional words and things that want to be added, or changed. Number two is adopt the document with small modifications. You know, generally, I think, this, maybe I'm biased, but through the planning process, there has been positive momentum that's been forming for some of these ideas and concepts. It's just little tweaks of things in terms of applications that still need to be worked out. Also, if there's some reason, there's just a section that's really holding you up from feeling good about the document, I always just say it out loud, there's 268 pages, I think it is, if you delete two, there's 266 great pages that you can start implementing right away. And so to that end, if there really is just a section that's super controversial, or just, just really doesn't make you feel good, just know that that's an option as well. Then there's a fourth option here, just because I wanted to put them all on the table, but I don't advocate for this one at all, but it's, you accept the document instead of adopting it, you keep the existing plan that you have right now, and just take direction from it. Now, I'll give you an example where this might be a bad idea, though, which is, Mr. Man, it's going back to the ETJ expansion, I know you said we should have started it yesterday, right? Well, that is in the new plan, that's not in the old plan. And in order to have the merit to increase your ETJ expansion, you have to meet the criteria. One of them being that you've done planning on the area in question, that you have the infrastructure planned, and those kinds of things. All of those questions are answered in this version of the comprehensive plan. So I think to achieve the other goals that you want, bullet four is out there, just so I didn't make a decision for you, but I think it's one of the first three bullets that you might want to contemplate as you go forward. But, again, I want to give you every option there is, so I throw them all out there, to have a conversation. But that's my last slide, I appreciate your patience, I know there's a lot of changes to go through, but I wanted to make sure that everything was front and center, so we can have a conversation about it going forward.
May I have a question in reference to what you have here? And the difference between point two and three? How do they differ? You have adopt the document with small modifications, that's one, and then adopt the document, delete the sections that are controversial.
Right. So in bullet two, I think it's, it might be like some of the comments we got today about adding safety, or removing some of the granularity of the mixed-use descriptions of the activity centers. To me, those are small modifications. I'll give you an example from another community I work in, there's just one where there's a lot of angst about one of the focus areas that we drew. And I said, if it's really that bad, just take it out. The document is still a whole, it's still very good, if that focus area really gives you heartburn, just take it out. That would be deleting a section, to me. So you'd be taking something out. Or if, for some reason, you're like, you know, Matt, you added that section on complete streets, but we don't like it, we'd rather it be in our engineering design manual, then I'd just say, just strike it. It's more than just wordsmithing, it's like, this whole idea gives me, gives me pause.
Okay. Counsel, I'll just open it up for free-range questions or comments, if anybody has any questions for Matt. I guess I'd forgotten, until you reminded us of how long we've been in this process. I mean, it's been a little while, and covered a lot of ground.
Yeah. I think each time, the document has gotten better, that we've done. I was joking to somebody, though, that we've now crossed the point where we've had the document longer than it took us to create the document. So from September to February, I think is, what, six months? And from March to September, seven months. So I see, because I think you have a lot of opportunities ahead of you, and those kinds of things, and so that's why I was proposing these four options that are there, for just consideration.
I think they're great recommendations, or suggestions, however you want to refer to them, up to the council side, how we want to react to those, for sure. Anything else for Mr. Neumaster? Staff, anything? Okay.
Just the recommendations on reducing that specificity, to keep that flexibility for the developers, and then sort of highlighting the mixed-use preference, because I think the verticality accomplishes multiple things, fiscally it does, but also open space, you're generating more open space the more vertical you go, and then the safety issue there. Just saw this memo, and I've had a chance to go through all of this. The second one, on page two, gives me a little concern, just because it's that 401 crossing project that's come before us, and I believe that is a change to the land use plan, and addition of a neighborhood activity center or something, and so that gives me a little concern at changing on the fly, when we've gotten some very significant recent feedback from the public on their expectations for that area. But, as I said, I haven't gone through all of these, that was the one that kind of jumped out at me. So I'll probably need some time to go through this.
Oh, of course, of course.
But I think it's a lot of good hard work, I like some of the changes on affordability and neighborhood character that came in late, so, good job by everybody.
Just a quick general question, and this is sort of off-target, I guess, but I couldn't help but see a picture, or maybe two, of Fenton Place, that I've had a chance to take a tour of in the past. I would just be curious to know, if you know, what level of, oh, I don't know, of planning or changing did Cary do as a result of that project over there? That's not a very good way to ask it, I don't guess.
No, it's a good ques... The reason I'm pausing is because this morning, I was in Knightdale, and when I did my directions to come down here, I was going to go through Fenton Place, because I wanted to see, because I know they're turning dirt, as you... And it was going to take so long, I said, I'm not going. And then here you have the question for me, which, I could have been, I could have said, I was there today. So I don't have an exact answer for you, but... So I don't have an exact answer for you, but, um, you know, obviously, in that situation, like that parking garage, I mean, it's pretty packed, it's pretty tight.
Yeah.
Um, and so in order to do that, um, I would say it would probably be best to interview the Cary planners, and I can do that, to figure out the hows and the whys. But, uh, my guess is going back to the earlier comments, that zoning took care of a lot of that. As the comprehensive plan probably set the tone, so the developer understood what needed to be done, but the zoning really put the finishes on it.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It's interesting to me that, uh, obviously Campo has moved their offices out there.
That's right.
And other, other places or other entities are looking at it as well. Become a popular spot, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, they, they've got it now, but we've got a couple spots on our map that we could be the next one, so.
Sure.
There's that ironworks project on Atlantic Avenue. It, you can drive down there and get there in 15 minutes, and it's only on about 20 acres. And now granted, they had the, the buildings that were there from the mill works.
The rehab, right.
The steel mill, but they've built parking decks and shopping and apartments and stuff, and, and it's only 20 acres. Pretty impressive.
Yep.
Okay, anything else from Council? Well, we've made you stand there quite a, quite a while, so, uh,
I'm good, I'm good.
You probably deserve, uh, anything else from anybody, if not?
I, I agree with, um, scanning through this stuff we got tonight. Mr. Dudgeon just pointed out the activity center, the project that's currently before us. I heard what people around there want, it's not that, so.
To that end, I think the memo is good, and then, because you obviously have a copy of the slide deck now, it's as easy as just seeing it, there's a black arrow on the slides, you'll know that there was a change. I would really study those changes as you're doing your finishing reviews.
Yeah, a question about the implementation matrix, and, uh, don't have a specific comments other than some of the timelines for implementation seem rather long.
Yeah.
Versus, oh, this is really important, we need to jump on this change. So I don't know when, I, we don't want to go through that now, but I, I think there's some back and forth with staff and town manager on prioritizing some of those to, um, jumpstart them rather than this zero to five-year window, which is kind of the fastest window on the matrix.
Yep.
So put that out there as well for future, because that's not part of the comprehensive plan, that's a separate.
That's correct, it's by, it's, it's by reference, but it's a separate document. Therefore, you don't have to go through the formal amendment process if you want to move something up. One community I'm working in now decided to go zero to three, so if that helps you, they just create urgency, they did some of them zero to three.
That would.
But I would say before you, like, not being presumptuous, but if we get to an adoption event, I would probably have both of those on the agenda and have the plan first and the implementation second. And that way, you know, there's not this gap in the two documents.
Thank you.
Okay, well, um, I want to thank you on behalf of the, of the mayor, and probably the council too, but, um, for, for your, for your work and, uh, energy and effort put into this. It's certainly given us a lot to, to consider, and still have work to do on it. But we certainly have what I consider to be a solid foundation and framework for, for moving ahead.
Fantastic, thank you all for the partnership, it's been great.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would just ask if there's any additional direction that council wanted to give staff and Matt tonight on expectations for next steps, not maybe a final answer, but just any additional guidance. I think we've heard some, some edits that obviously are desired, but beyond that, I know there were several folks that had some questions and concerns about adoption timelines. So any additional conversation that council could have, or, or guidance to just, just so we can sort of go back with Matt and negotiate what we need to engage him to do beyond the work he's already committed to would be helpful.
Okay, that's a good point, Mr. Hodges, and, uh, yeah, Council, now would be a good time to, uh, to weigh in on that matter. Otherwise, in, in terms of Matt's work and so forth, he, he's essentially completed what he was, uh, what he was hired to do. Is that right? I mean, that's the way I see it, yeah.
But we will need his help to make these timelines and so forth, so we still need to, we need to continue engaging him to the extent that his schedule allows, and to the extent that council desires us to do that.
Okay.
I would suggest that the edits that were recommended tonight, uh, make those edits, and then send it to us electronically, just to edit changes. And then if we feel comfortable with that, then we can look at the next step of making, which is step number two, adopt the document with small modifications. If the edits are good, if we need to re-edit some more, we'll redo that.
And do you think it would be helpful to have the highlights that are left in the document tonight, left in with any other changes in a different color? Or would you be willing for us to strip out all of the highlighting and only highlight things changed from tonight? Or Matt may have a more succinct way he wants to ask that, but I think it would just be good to know if you want two different colors of highlights running, or take away all highlights up until tonight and only highlight tonight forward?
Well, I don't, don't take out the highlights, that guy's, I can understand what the heck's going on.
Okay.
So maybe we'll do the new changes in green, or something of that nature, like a turquoise, so you know.
And I think we do need to set aside maybe a time at one of the meetings to go over this, since this is the first time it's been consolidated into one place. And this is the land use map, which is the most important document, you said.
Yep.
So we need to step through that, but I don't think it'll take that much time. I just think we want to know what, what's in it one last time before we vote on it.
No, that's understood.
Okay, if that's the case, we will, um, let you take your leave, sir, or if you want to stick around, you can, but.
We're gonna have to start heading home.
Okay, yeah, sure.
All right.
And again, we thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Job well done, sure enough. Uh, okay, Council, uh, we've been to this about an hour and a half, so, um, we still have a little ways to go. I'm gonna propose that we take about a 10-minute recess, give everybody a chance to refresh a little bit, and, uh, and let's, uh, come back with the next agenda item, is that okay? All right, so it's essentially 7:30, give, it'll take a minute or two, so declare a 10-minute recess, try to be back about a little after 20, 20 of eight, I guess.
With our agenda, item number three, and we'll recognize our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Blanco, for presentation at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. This is tonight's, the planning theme continues with this presentation. It'll be much briefer than Matt's, and I have to say that it will not be as pretty and visually appealing as Matt's was.
We'll accept that.
But this is sort of a brief, to give you some information about an update that we're hoping you will bless for the comprehensive master plan that guides our work at the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department. Quick agenda, it's another view of a proposed update to the, to a specific chapter of the 2020 comp plan for the Parks Department. We'll present some of the highlights of priorities that we're proposing, and then sort of give you information on next steps, because as part of accreditation process, any revisions to the comp plan would have to be followed by strategic plan. So we want to, again, sort of maintain our accreditation standards. As a background, just a reminder, the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Comprehensive Master Plan, or COMP Plan in short, was adopted by Town Council in January of 2020. That would be pre-pandemic, so a lot of things have changed. It's a 10-year plan, and it has 18 goals, 55 objectives, and 215-plus action items. So that's a lot of work to be done in 10 years. The goals are grouped primarily in five areas. Parkland, which encompasses both parks and facilities like Recreation Center and Senior Center, programming, arts and cultural resources, operations, and finance. Chapter 10 is the implementation plan, and it did not include at the time of adoption a timeline or estimations of probable costs for the various action items recommended. We have certainly since then undertaken multiple steps related to this Chapter 10. I think I sent to you earlier, the week before last or last week, sort of a quick summary of the implementation action items that we have completed to date. Again, as part of our accreditation process, we are required to have and to conduct periodic reviews of both the comprehensive master plan and of a strategic plan. And the accreditation agency separates them both, even though they're somewhat sort of repetitive of each other. We went through this process with the PRCR Advisory Committee and staff. We reviewed and considered the items to develop again a timeline on priorities. And the timeline, again, will become the basis for the strategic plan that we have to, to bring forth as part of our accreditation. So, Chapter 10. So we have the prioritization and timeline. We have, again, five broad categories, ongoing and short-term, which are the action items that we think are realistic, I am muted, but not here, are realistic within the next five years. There's priority pending funding, are action items that we think are really important to complete as additional funds or resources become available. There's also some aspirational, long-term action items that really require significant financial investment. We don't think that they're realistic at this time, but again, sort of the world changes as we learn in 2020, so we want to still keep them in the comprehensive plan, but mark them again as long-term items that require significant investment. There's also some duplicates or repetitive items that appear more than once or are significantly similar, so we're not necessarily deleting them, we're just are going to track them at one point in the comp plan versus having to track the same information three or four times in the document. We also have some items that have been completed that, again, have been sort of done since the January 2020 adoption, and you will see or you have seen that action items could be in more than one category. Now, the information that we shared with you earlier, and it's also in the appendix to this presentation, sort of uses color-coded dots to kind of prioritize or to sort of give a timeline to the various action items. This is sort of the very first goal, which is parkland, and as you know, we're heavily involved in 1.1.1, which is developing the Yergin property. It is both ongoing and short-term. We know that this will be completed, not good, within the next five years, but we also know that Phase Two is aspirational and long-term and will require significant additional investment. And you can sort of see the same kind of thinking in various components of this particular goal. I sort of bring to your attention the very bottom line, I just included this one here, and it's sort of a phrase that, again, it's repeated elsewhere in the plan, and we made reference to the particular section with the number of the objectives, so again, so we can track just in one place versus having to repeat ourselves in our reports. As a summary, I didn't want to, I did not think you wanted me to go through 20 pages of dots, so I figured I would sort of summarize real quickly, but if you really want me to do that, I'm happy to do that. But to summarize, in the goal of parkland, certainly the development of the new parks, Yergin and Meadowbrook and South Garner Greenway, those are sort of ongoing and short-term priorities. We also, thanks to your allocation of funding in the fiscal year '24, one cent of property tax to park maintenance, we will be, again, sort of in working with Public Works to improve existing parks, because funding has become available. And then as a matter of practice, we'll be incorporating universal design and design best practices in any new project that we engage with. If more funding is available, again, priority projects pending funding, anything that we can do to continue the improvements and upgrades to our parks, any additional planning that we can undertake for greenways, because that has been a priority in the comp plan. And then long-term, aspirational, again, pending future funding, I'm sorry, one of the, oops, one of the things in the comp plan is developing another indoor recreational facility of about 21,000 square feet, as well as between 33 and 42.7 miles of greenway. That is, just thinking of greenways, a mile of greenway nowadays is about $2 million. So investment-wise, that would be quite a bit of, of a large investment to, to achieve so many miles. And then again, sort of, there's some studies recommended throughout the master plan that we would do, pending funding, and again, aspirational and not necessarily in the short term. In terms of programming, again, we are doing a lot of work with our partners, we continue to do so, as well as engage with new partners to continue to enhance our programming. We have become more adept at collecting and using data to inform our program decisions. We do a lot of surveys to our patrons, and then sort of reflect on that data as we do new programming or as we sort of rethink existing programs, and certainly building our, our staff capacity to continue to do their great work. In terms of priorities pending funding, enhancing the Senior Center facility was one of the priorities in the comp plan, and thanks to congressional earmark, we should be able to do that as soon as funding, sort of federal money kind of takes a while to get to us, so we're looking forward to that. Aspirational, long-term, the comp plan has a couple of tools that the consultants that produce that plan like to use. We don't necessarily have the staff to, to do those at this point, but aspirational, long-term, they're good tools. When we build capacity, we certainly will be thinking about implementing some of those. In arts and cultural resources, ongoing and short-term, we continue to leverage grants and programs and new partnerships. One of the things that we have been able to achieve is upgrading some of the audio visual equipment at G-PAC with ARP money, with some federal grants that we received in 2022, and with some savings that we identified in 2023. So we'll continue, again, to keep the AV lights down, so all the stuff that, that makes G-PAC work. And then, G-PAC has really sort of started doing some educational programming, again, sort of in keeping with the goals of the master plan. In terms of priorities that would become short-term, expanding G-PAC at Showtime Series with National Act, that is spending additional money, and developing a cultural heritage trail. Aspirational, long-term, the comp plan has some guidance for what I would think it's sort of architectural preservation programs. It's a little bit outside of our sort of existing staff structure, so, you know, would be great to do, but it's not something that we can do at this particular point. And developing a public art program, again, it's a funding required for us to get into that, that type of activity. Operational, continue to develop our staff capacity, improving our contract management practices so that we're much more consistent with best practices. One thing that we completed this fiscal year was the update of our marketing plan. We have really been sort of taking advantage of social media to spread the word about our programs. Priority pending funding, again, I mentioned earlier, there were some studies that were recommended in the comp plan, and the capacity or use study would be certainly something that will be interesting to conduct pending funding, as well as continue to expand the training that we provide to our staff. Aspirational, long-term, we can certainly use more technology to do more things, but we know that technology comes with, with a, you know, a cost, so we're putting it in sort of, we'd love to do more, but long-term, as funding becomes available. Finances, we're using our recreational management software to do, to become much more aware of the cost recovery of the various programs that we offer. In terms of pending funding, we have to incorporate those new assets in the cost of service. And again, aspirational, long-term, continue to look at funding sources for the department and increase our administrative support as appropriate. That's it. So, I mentioned that we're building on this comp plan prioritization to do the strategic plan. It's a requirement to maintain our accreditation, and essentially, the strategic plan for the next three to five years will focus on the strategies and action items that have a green dot in the matrix that we provided. As funding for those prior, other priorities become available, we can certainly upgrade or update, I should say, the strategic plan to keep it as a living document. Next steps, where we're here tonight is to obtain your feedback for the proposed prioritization that we are bringing forth to you. If you want additional presentation with many more details for a future work session, we can certainly, as a team, do that. Megan and Katie have been part of, of this process, so they'll be more than happy to, to address their particular sections. If you're, want to provide feedback in some other way, we appreciate that, and then if you're good with this direction, we'd love to put this as a consent agenda item in September, and then bring the strategic plan at the October mid-month meeting. Appendix, you have it in front of you. With that, that's the end of my very short, not very pretty presentation.
Well, you, you covered a lot of ground in short order there, I would say, for sure. A lot of, lot of stuff packed into all that, so thank you very much for your thorough soul, council. Questions or comments for Ms. Blanco?
On your, one of the previous pages, it said that public art was a long-term aspiration. I'd like us to do whatever we can to move that into the shorter term. I have been begging for public art for many, many years. Other towns and cities have it, they've had it for a while, and we still lag behind. I started talking about a splash pad at least 15 years ago, and again, we're one of the last towns in the area to get them, and I'd like us to see what we can do to, to come up to speed on these things. Public art makes a huge difference in the way people perceive your town. Thank you.
Okay, going this way, Mr. Downer.
Just sort of on the, as the liaison to the committee, I saw the work that the committee members put into helping you all shape this. I'm sure you kind of nudged some things or you saw some things, but the committee was really engaged in helping prioritize this stuff, and there was a lot of attention to the fiscal constraints of wanting to do everything, and I see that in this document. So I agree with Ms. Behringer on that, but there are some other things, and I think as council looks at this report, the goal should be moving those dots to the left. Those yellow dots where it's like priority pending funding, those are really, if you look at a lot of those, really high priority issues that we need to make sure we have the resources for. And even some of the aspirational, long-term items are things that we really highly prioritize, we just don't have the funding for. I know Meadowbrook is in there as one in kind of short-term recreational use. We've all kind of commented on how important that is, but the money needs to be there. So I appreciate all the hard work that's gone in, and, and really, the goal is just So, I mean, it's funding, it's like Mr. Dellinger said, priority pending funding. To get the yellow dots to move, you have to add money in for many of these capital projects, which is they're looking to do, the bulk of that $18 million for the community center, which is already full, like ours. And like y'all pointed out, we need a new indoor rec center here. So, that's just, that's the only way we're going to be able to fund those projects along with the new public works facility and other facilities. So, it's always the priority pending funding. The yellow dots kind of rule, and not, they don't kind of rule us, how do we solve answering the yellow dots and making them, you know, move along? So, I thank you for the information. It's good information, and your proposal for your timeline is fine with me on adopting these two plans in September and October.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton, and I'll go to Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. Great presentation. I would agree with your timelines. I think they look good. And it might shock my colleague, but I really agree with everything Mr. Dillinger said down there on all the moving the dots and let's put this thing forward, because one thing we found out in bonds and what have you, as we talk to the public, parks and rec is very, very important to people's move in the Garner. And I know we just can't quite build them fast enough, but it's all about the money, and just hold the course and do everything you can do, and we'll do everything we can do.
It's the one service said from zero to 99 you can participate in, so.
Yeah, and I would just echo what council members have said. I'm always intrigued too when I sometimes go in one of our parks, as I like to do pretty regularly, and see something a little different that's being done, which is, which is fine. I believe it was this past, I guess this past weekend, I guess we must have had some type of a disc golf tournament.
Frisbee golf. I went out there Saturday. It was great.
Frisbee golf, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, I hadn't seen that in a while, and I know there's some passionate folks about that in the area here, so hopefully they had a chance to get their opportunity to play some disc golf out there. So it's a beautiful park to use that, and I didn't even hear any complaints from anybody else having to dodge flying frisbees, so at any rate, worked out well. But that's just one example of, you know, the versatility of our parks and the demand for use for a variety of different things, for sure. So thank you for your leadership and your insight there, and as has been mentioned, we hope to move some of those things from one area to the other over there. That's all I have, unless anybody else has anything for Ms. Blanco.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it a whole bunch. Okay, I believe we're now down to managers' reports. So, Mr. Manj, I recognize you, sir.
Yes, Mayor, Town Council. We have on there the opinion agenda report, just shows some of the things that are upcoming, expected to be upcoming, and as usual, these things can move around. I think might be a couple of things that get moved back. And John, you want to explain some of those, or Terry?
Ms. Jones is going to start, and I'll add on to that.
Thank you. You'll see, first September 5th, we had anticipated doing the Walters Buffalo Development Agreement update, and then the White Oak Bryan traffic signal agreements. I just today received some comments from DOT on the spot agreement for the traffic signal, particularly on the sub-agreement that we would have with Pulte. So that's going to have to get pushed back to the 19th, because there's not time to get all of that worked out. And I think it makes more sense to have the update at the same time that you're approving those agreements. And I think there's some coordination that has to be done with some other projects in that area, and John can probably elaborate more on that.
Just that we're working on that coordination now, and so we hope to have some additional information on that, as well as the feedback that Ms. Jones got on the development agreement, sub-agreement, so that we can bring it all forward.
Question, is there an issue with it? Is there an issue with the light at all with DOT?
As far as the funding, no. It, it's an issue with who's doing what, and in the agreement, the grant agreement that DOT wants us to adopt, it says that they have to approve any sub-agreement, or, you know, anytime we delegate those responsibilities. And so I was having a little bit of communication difficulty with the DOT folks about the, at first, they were like, we don't have to review it. And I said, it's a term of the agreement, you have to review it. I don't want to agree to something and then find out that, you know, we're not doing what DOT said, so. And then there's, you know, their standard is a one-year term to get it all done, and we don't know that it's going to be able to get constructed within a year, so I'm a little, you know, we're asking for some clarification on that. DOT sort of said, oh, well, it's fine, don't worry about it. But I do worry about if, at the end of the day, they don't, you know, provide the funding so that we can reimburse the developer for that. So just a few, but yeah, I mean, the traffic signal slated to do it, to be done, it's just a matter of getting all these agreements in place.
Ms. Jones got some feedback, responses to her questions, and we've also had some conversations with the division engineer today to help further clarify a couple of points. So we think we're getting toward that. We just know we won't have it all packaged in time for your agenda next week.
Ms. Behringer, yes.
Thank you.
Just a question, with that stoplight at Bryan Road, does that, does the installation of the stoplight also include repairing the damage that's already at Bryan Road at that intersection? It's not on White Oak, it's on Bryan as you turn off of White Oak onto Bryan Road. Is that, would that be included in the installation of the stoplight, or is that going to have to be a separate issue?
I'm not familiar with that, so I don't.
Wouldn't think so, but.
The pavement, or with?
Pavement's in terrible shape.
I mean, my understanding is there would be some improvements to the pavement, because they'll have to go in and they're widening and then have to re-stripe things, but.
Is that part of installing the stoplight?
Fixing an existing maintenance issue would not be specifically called out as a part of this project. Now, it would likely take care of that project, but they would be, typically would not be handled at the same time, that I'm aware of. So we can just, we can assess whatever, whether there's anything there that can be done until that time, of the installation happening. And then with the movement of those off the agenda, Mr. Trezenberg suggested that since we had a lighter agenda, he could go ahead and bring back the map memo that you had tonight for discussion, so that discussion could happen as soon after tonight as possible for freshness of, in mind, and also so that we could provide Mr. Nooncaster with a more complete package of edits. So with your approval, we'll just, we'll go ahead and move that forward. Also, just to note, as Mr. Trezenberg's memo is here, we'll ask him to clarify it when it goes into the agenda packet, but he is referencing page numbers from the public hearing version of that, so if you're looking at those page numbers and it's not matching your version three document, just know that was the original reference. He was showing where they moved from, because they've now been moved, and we'll ask him to clarify that in the version that goes into the agenda packet for anyone else who's looking at that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hodges. Anybody else have a question for, well, the manager and sort of the segment that the town attorney covered? Or do you have other managers you're going to cover? Ms. Jones?
No, just in the closed session.
Okay, all right. All right, so we're now at council reports then, and so I'll start to my right with Mr. Vance this time.
I do not have a council report tonight.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, I'll flip around and go to you.
Nothing on me, other than the fact that you had mentioned the disc or frisbee golf out there on Saturday. I did have a chance to go out there and meet with those guys and get an overview, and like you said, it's a big deal to these guys, and they're hoping in our parks in the future that we might be looking at something like that, and it's that it would bring a lot of tournaments. It was a good visit. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, okay. Mr. Dellinger?
Nothing, just maybe for the next meeting, update on the north, the Garner North Park project, to keep us in the loop on what's going on with that. That's all. Yeah.
Okay, I'll go back to Mr. Singleton.
Well, I mean, in regards to the disc golf, there is preliminarily, I think at the Meadowbrook, we had a disc golf course, so we'll see if and when all this stuff takes place. You know, got to be, got to get plans, got to get approved, got to, so anyway. And of course, in that picture, we've got to take care of the damage issue first, so anyway, thank you.
Okay, did I cover everybody? Anybody else? Who's going? Sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, the All-America City sign in front of Garner Rec Park has mildew on it. It's been there for quite a while. I thought I had mentioned it before, but I don't really remember. And so if we can look into that, just little gray spots all over the sign. And then 1412 Vandoor Springs Road, we're all familiar with that. It's got a lot of junk cars in the yard, a lot of junk in the carport. Is there anything that we can do about that moving forward to improve the looks of it? Most of the cars and trucks are pointed, they're facing outward, I'm assuming so. You can't see whether they're tagged or not, but it looks like the city dump out there. So this is not new, but if we can check into that. And question about the Go Raleigh bus shelter, are we hearing anything about? I think they told us about two months ago, they were going to put it in there in two to three weeks, but nothing's happened.
They told us last week that they hoped to schedule that for this week. They've only got two people staffing the entire department that are installing all the bus shelters. They are struggling with staff. They still have that prioritized on the top of the list. They were hoping to get there this week. I don't know if the weather will throw that off, but we are, we're hoping that we, they have heard the request, and they've got it prioritized. They're just, they're terribly understaffed, and they just ask for our understanding with that.
And that's understandable. We have more people, though, at the bus stop now. It's growing, and so there needs to be some kind of shelter and a trashcan on the pole. Okay, that's.
Oh, I'll mention this, since they're working on planning the splash pad, we'll make sure we get some public art there.
Absolutely.
At the splash pad.
Even if it's just one piece, a little piece, it's a start.
I couldn't resist the opportunity.
Me first.
I just, they're endorsing your idea.
And I would just note that the, our Performing Arts Center is a versatile facility, and the stage area there worked very nicely this past week for the, for the Garner Chamber event that was conducted there, and I think probably we had, you know, some people in the facility or on stage up there that maybe hadn't been there before, part of the chamber. So it was a nice way to show it off and to, to let them use it for good use. So thank you, Ms. Blanco. All right, that's all I have as it relates to council reports. We have a closed session scheduled. Should I read the site there? Pursue it to North Carolina General Statute 143.318, 11A3, to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation.
Sorry, Mr.
Okay. Motion made and properly seconded. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Here opposed, no. Okay. Just a moment, we will declare ourselves to be. Just a moment, we will declare ourselves to be.
Okay, the mayor calls council back out of closed session and into open session. Council went into closed session to consult with the town attorney regarding some current litigation and the matter was discussed and instruction was given for the way the town attorney will pursue the matter. That's all I have for our agenda this evening, so unless anybody has anything else for the good of the cause, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn this work session of the town council.
That moves the circuit.
Okay, all in favor? Vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, there's no opposition. Declare this closed, excuse me, I got closed session on my mind. Declare this work session of the town council to be adjourned. See you at the next meeting.